Hey, everybody. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board's Work Session on the follow-up to the Budget Amendment Number Four. This is informational, and if you'd like to join us by conference call, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and the pin number is 1234. And by way of introduction, I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, and also present is the Vice Chair, Commissioner Ty Mensah. Commissioner Edwards has gone again, or is he here?
He hasn't been here yet.
Thank you. Who else we have? County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and I see Patty Rosetto is with us. Who am I, who else am I missing? I don't see anybody else on the screen.
I think you, so far you have covered all in attendance.
Okay, good. Thank you, then. Go ahead, Ramiro.
Yeah, this is a briefing as a follow-up to the public testimony you received on Wednesday related to the Budget Amendment Number Four. And, and just what you should be expecting today, I'm gonna walk you through briefly some of the public testimony you have received and you've received on Wednesday. And Robin will walk you through the details of, of the proposed resolution, as well as the budget amendments. And also, we're gonna be providing you with a process in which Commissioner Edwards made a comment, I believe at the end of the public hearing, that he would like to probably have, having to vote on the specific items of the, of the, of the proposed Amendment Number Four. And we're gonna be proposing a process as to how the Board can exercise that option if, if the Board chooses to do so.
So, you're gonna define a process to accommodate Commissioner Edwards, then, for this, to separate or parcel out some, what piece of the budget?
No, I think when, if I understand what Commissioner Edwards wanted to do is wanted to exercise his legislative prerogative to vote on the specific items of the proposed budget amendment. So there's a couple of things that we need to be cognizant of that, is you will not be making a decision today. This is just to walk you through the process, give you the high-level remarks, and giving you a process in which you could probably utilize if that is the case on Tuesday. And the process that we're gonna be offering to the Board is through an amendment process. Meaning each Board Member has the option to amend any portions of, of the proposed Amendment Number Four, every single item. And, and so moving into Tuesday, I am not suggesting for, after this conversation, to change the resolution or to change some of the items proposed in Amendment Number Four, because that has been how the public testimony was received and how the public have seen that portion of, of the proposal. But on Tuesday, again, we will walk you through as to what some of the options that you may have. If you like to amend any portions of, of the budget itself, and at that point, you, you will go through the process of exercising introducing an amendment, and then the Board will vote whether that amendment can be included or not. And at the end, you will probably exercise your prerogative to approve the Amendment Number Four with amendments that have been already approved.
Very good. And this, this has been on all of our calendars, and Commissioner Edwards oftentimes sits off-screen.
Commissioner Edwards just arrived.
Thank you.
And again, we'll, we'll walk you through that, and that's probably how we wanted to address Commissioner Edwards' suggestion that he made on Wednesday.
Good, I'm glad he's here. Thank you.
So, let me begin by just give you a high-level remarks of the, of the public testimony that you received. You received, the first testimony you received from Larry Jefferson, he is with the Office of Public Defense. He provided testimony related to, the Department would like to buy back one of the positions that are currently scheduled to be eliminated as part of your budget reductions. And the reasoning behind this, when the Board offered offices and departments to buy back those positions, they can find other savings, they will be equitable to the savings as a result of eliminating those positions. At that point, the Department didn't have the, the budget analysis done for 2020. They completed that on July 10th, as you heard on the testimony, and that's what the proposal is, they do have capacity in this year. So that's the public testimony we received from Larry Jefferson. You also received testimony from Mr. John Pettit, and he provided documents, and he followed up with an email, I believe, yesterday to all of you, explaining a little more in detail his testimony. He made a reference that perhaps the, the, the numbers the staff has provided, have provided to the Board has changed, and he provided specific dates, and again, on the email that he sent to you, he gave even more detail in terms of both the revenues, as well as the expenditures. If I may paraphrase, he, the overall, his comment, that he states that we are understating the revenues and, and overstating the expenditures associated in 2020. So, that was the, the gist of, and also, he made a comment that perhaps it is a, an illegal way to, to change the levy rate, and perhaps the, you might be exposed to return some of that to the citizens of the county. You also receive public testimony, and those are the same, so I'm just gonna read the names of them, from Mr. Tom Crawford, Wayne Olson, Sam Merrill, Tony Wilson, Barack Gale, Elisa Dunne, and Chris Van Durren, John McLean, where, they, and overall, they were in support of you to consider the request for the Thurston Climate Action Team, and that was a result of the briefing that you received over a week ago, where the team outlined the need of expenditures of $150,000 to begin their process. Out of the $150,000, the county share was slated to be about $37,000, and that is what is the proposal before you. And also, they made a suggestion in a couple of occasions that perhaps if the Board agrees with the $37,000, they should not be subject to any proviso, as they stated. So, that is the brief report of the public testimony you've received so far in this particular matter. And at this point, I will ask Robin to walk you through the details of that, and again, and hopefully at the end, they will walk you through as to the process that you may want to exercise on Tuesday as a result of Commissioner Edwards' request at the end of the public hearing.
Just to add, though, to the testimony, and in addition to the oral testimony that you received, we have also received written comments.
Oh, thank you.
Right. So, in addition to the ones that I mentioned on Wednesday, we received a few more in favor of the funding the Climate Action Initiative. So overall, about 30 in favor of the money for the climate initiative. One person wrote in in favor of increased funding for COVID-19 testing. We had one person write in opposed to a reduction in the Sheriff's Budget, and one person wrote in in favor of a reduction of the Sheriff's Budget that is equal to the reduction that other offices and departments have taken. So that's the, that's the wrap on the written comments that we've received so far.
Robin, the comments regarding TCAT, the Climate Action, were the comments specific as to a dollar amount, the 37 versus 150?
They were all advocating for the $150,000, but I think that one of the things in the TCAT presentation that you had last week, is that presentation talked about $150,000, and it was only, like, right at the very end of that meeting or, or later, that even I understood that they were only asking for a portion of that from the county. But they were consistently advocating for $150,000.
Okay, and the piece regarding the Sheriff's Budget being equal to everybody else's, didn't they, wasn't it 2% across the Board?
We used 2% as a way to calculate. A few of the offices actually had reductions of a little more, but I believe that that person was talking about the 2% reduction.
So that, that was equitably distributed, the 2% reduction?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
I wanna clarify on that, that the, it's been referred to several times as the Climate Initiative, and this is not, this is not the Climate Mitigation Plan or any of the elements of that which will be coming later in the year. This is a clean energy program, regional clean energy program, which, which will dovetail potentially with efforts of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Steering Committee and the plan, but it's, it's kind of a separate thing. I want that to be clear. This is not us deciding whether to implement recommendations that may be forthcoming from an as-yet-not-finished Climate Mitigation Plan, which could have its own strategies and funding requests involved. This is a separate, based on pandemic and aligning ourselves for, for stimulus money that might come, and getting a head start on a regional structure for clean energy portions of that plan. So it's, it's connected and potentially complementary too, but not, not a formal piece of the Climate Mitigation Plan.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and continue, then.
All right. So moving on to the resolution, the packet that you have before you are the documents that are up for consideration next Tuesday. These are the documents that we posted on the website and provided to citizens who asked for them, and we had those posted by July 17. The first is the resolution itself, with quite a few whereas clauses that basically boiled down, say that the county recognizes that there is an economic recession in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, and that that will reduce our revenue, which leads to the need to reduce spending. And the document goes on to talk about the federal money that we have received to use in response to the pandemic. On page two, under the Now There For section, there is the normal language that we have when you adopt a budget amendment, that just simply says that there is an amendment approved according to the attachments, which I'll walk through in just a moment. Number two of this amendment is unique. This gives authority to the county manager to take the coronavirus relief funds that are appropriated in this document in non-departmental, and to move them to offices and departments as we identify eligible costs that need to be paid for with this money. We, we don't know exactly how much each office and department needs. The Board has authorized, as you saw in the presentation, a set amount of the CRF money to be used by our offices and departments, and we want to give each office and department exactly what they need. This clause allows us to do that. Any questions about that?
Not at this point, I don't. There were nothing. Go ahead.
Okay. Attachment A, which is next in your packet, and I'm looking at these and realizing that we need to title the attachments. So Attachment A is the Budget and FTE by Department Report, 2020 Amendment A, Amendment Four, Amendment A. Simply what this document does is go office by office and say, here's the current appropriation, the 2020 adopted, here's the amount for that office in Amendment Four, and here's what their total budget would be. And these are amounts are the net of any increase from the CRF funding and decrease in the budget reductions. So you have that by office by fund, and that is the level at which the county normally appropriates spending authority in Thurston County. The next document, B, that is the legal paper that is about 20 pages long, that is the detail of this budget, and this goes item by item showing each reduction that you have taken or each addition that you've made of CRF money. So, item by item, we have been through these documents already. My intention is not to go item by item today, but just to let you know that this is part of your packet, and the Board has reviewed each of these things in depth in the weeks in May, June, and July. The next item in your packet is Attachment C. It is Changes to Position Control. This is the, the document that formally eliminates the vacant positions. There are seven of them at the, at the point in which you gave guidance to move forward to the adoption of the budget. There were seven positions left. There is also a amendment of positions in community planning and economic development, where they are taking a full-time FTE and reducing it to a halftime FTE that's part of the savings. But these are the positions that you saw on the final elimination list. And the last document that should have been in your packet is, and please let me know if you don't have this, it's the Potential Changes to the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment Four Resolution and Attachments.
Yeah, it is included.
It is in there, okay.
It's the last page.
Right. So before we move on to that last document, and that is the segue into the discussion about the process, do you have any questions at all about the resolution?
Yes. Do you want me to just go ahead? I was waiting for the Chair.
Commissioner Hutchings, his microphone's muted.
Muted, Mr. Chair.
Because I coughed. I don't have any questions regarding the resolution, because I've only gone through about a third of it. I have no questions regarding the Therefore, and Commissioner Edwards, go ahead. I just can't see when you set off cameras, whether you want to question or not, but go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I'm just asking, I didn't want to interrupt if you had something going ahead of mine. Anyway, I guess my question is, I'm gonna be pretty open about opposing most of this budget adjustment, other than for the climate mitigation folks, if there's a, a separate action there. And I want to make sure that we don't have anything slipped in, and when I say that I'm opposed to a reduction in any of the law and justice component that we fund, not just the Sheriff's Office. I look at, I, I know they made recommendations themselves to cover certain things. I know that was under duress. I think that we have not satisfied many in the community that are concerned that there are issues in this budget that are questionable, and I'm just gonna let it go at that at this point in time. And I would actually make a motion to fund the $37,000 to the Climate Action Team folks for their work.
That will be done Tuesday, when we vote on these things.
Well, that, that's fine. We can follow what, what staff's recommending or not, I just want to make sure that I put that on the record, and I'm opposed to adjusting this budget at this point in time, because I, I see that we, we wasted about, oh, two, a million dollars on a sandbox that we didn't need to waste. So I've never figured out, is the sky falling, or are we in the middle of some kind of a storm here?
We can't wait for you to figure that out.
Yep. Well, I just want to make, make it very clear that my position is that I'm opposed to reducing this budget at this time, because I do not feel it is fair to all components within county government.
So where, with the public defense position and the, the CRF funding?
I'm opposed to cutting the public defenders as well. I think that it's part and parcel to the criminal justice component that we take care of here at the county level. So, you guys can do what you want, I just, I'm not satisfied with what's happened here.
I, I would like to just state that nothing in this budget is, there was nothing slipped in, every item in this budget was thoroughly reviewed by the Board.
And I'm not making that allegation, I'm just stating that I am not satisfied at this point in time that we've done adequate review.
So maybe that, this will be a good opportunity just to explain the process as to how you can exercise this legislative prerogative this coming Tuesday. And maybe what we have on the last page is, is an example. Staff is not necessarily suggesting or, or, or making a determination, the, the Board is going to go through this process. But moving into Tuesday, is the same documents that Robin just gone through, the resolution and the associated attachments. So my suggestion for the Board will be, if you like to make any changes or make any particular item to be voted individually, through, should be through an amendment process. Meaning, the, the Board may consider to read the motion to approve Amendment Number Four, and at that point during the, the discussion that you may have, then there is an opportunity for each Board Member to introduce amendments as you will see fit. And each amendment will be considered by the Board on a, to exercise your vote, and then the majority of the Board will approve or not those particular amendments. So, and, and, and that is the, the best process, just to make sure that we don't step outside of what I believe the, the, the process that we need to do, make sure that everything is, is, is tight, and, and all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. Yes, Commissioner Mensah?
I see the intent of that, and I, I think if you had a grab bag of, if you had a grab bag of yeses and nos among the Board Members or Commissioner Edwards or whoever, that would make sense, but what I just heard from Commissioner Edwards is that he doesn't want to make any of the adjustments, so, other than maybe the climate thing. So, it might be simpler than that. I mean, he, if that's his position, then he can simply just vote no on the amendment, and, and maybe we just have the climate handled separately, and that, that could be a lot simpler than trying to identify, having him trying to make an amendment to every single thing we're doing, because there's a lot of pieces in there. It sounds like we may be in, have a simpler path forward.
I, I, yeah, I just want to be very careful not to take away the, the legislative option that each Commissioner has.
I totally get it.
So I just, I, I just wanna, I, I personally, I don't want to cross the line, and that's what the process that I'm stated before you.
I was gonna ask for the same, until we made the adjustment on the 2%, I was gonna ask for the same consideration that Commissioner Edwards did, so I'd support him 100% to come up with a process where he can exercise his view. I just heard him say he doesn't want to make any adjustment, which would make it a lot simpler.
It, it, well, if, I, I don't want to, you know, jump onto Tuesday and see how Commissioner Edwards will like to exercise his prerogative, but this is a process they're proposing to you, even to the items that you heard related to the Thurston Climate Action Team. That needs to be introduced as an amendment. So, and, and that's what the last page speaks of that, and this, we have prepared a sample motions for you to exercise the, the prerogative. And for instance, on the first amendment that, for your consideration is to exempt the public defense position as, as Larry Jefferson stated to you, and that is a motion and the purpose. On the next one is the, the, related to the Climate Action Initiatives, which includes adding $37,000 as a motion, it will be funded by the non-departmental, out of, non-departmental out of the general fund. It also stated the purpose, and, and for your consideration, it's another amendment number three, that is more, more of a technical adjustments related to the coronavirus fund. So those are the, the, the three proposed amendments that staff has captured based on the public testimony that you may want to introduce, to maybe wants to sponsor, whatever Commissioner, whomever wants to sponsor, as an amendment after the motion is introduced, and then you will vote on those amendments. But also, I would like, I, I would like to ask the Board at this point, is there any other amendments? So staff can prepare the, the, the language for you to introduce those amendments on Tuesday. And that is really a way to answer Commissioner Edwards' request that he mentioned at the end of the public hearing on Wednesday.
Go ahead, Ty.
I don't have any other amendments. I, I guess I would like to discuss with the Board, it sounded like there were at least two votes for this climate, for this clean energy. And again, I think you might want to word it for a, a regional clean energy initiative or something, rather than climate action, I think it's gonna confuse the public, number one. Number two, there was a suggestion, I had made a proposal to make it conditional on equal contributions from the other three jurisdictions. I might be willing to amend that in light of the public comment to say that if we got, it's conditional on equal contribution from at least two other jurisdictions. That way, if one city didn't feel like it had the means, but I think unless you had $100,000 plus, you're not gonna be able to launch this program. So I, that would be my suggestion as to how to phrase Budget Amendment Two. That's just my, you know, my thoughts. I don't have any other, I don't have any other, and then I guess on public defense, I definitely support that, because they just didn't have the numbers, and we would have absolutely allowed them to buy back the position. There's two, is it, is it, I didn't understand Larry, they're only asking for one? It says here that, because he talked about $500,000 in the black, so is it possible they wanted both of these positions instead of just one?
No, it was only, it's only one position they're looking to save, because the, the year is still ongoing, although they're in a good position, and just because of the mergers that have not provided a lot of defense to indigent defenders. So, I, I don't think, I believe the Department is, is keen now to take advantage of all the savings, because the year is still going.
Okay, very good.
I have a question regarding, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with the resolution, Amendment Number One. I have a question regarding, um, I'm o- yeah, I'm okay with the, uh, resolution amendment number one, public defense, and the, um, the initiative for climate, um, and the technical, of course. But I have a question regarding the resolution. And the twelfth whereas down, or the third whereas up, where allowable expenditures for coronavirus relief funds, the second line says expenses for public safety. Is that related to the hazard pay?
That is in general, um, the guidance that we have from U.S. Treasury allows all of these types of costs.
Okay, does that include hazard pay?
It is inclusive, and we'll have the conversation about hazard pay on Tuesday.
Okay. Other than that, uh, I'm okay with, uh, with moving on with the, the rest of the budget.
So the the, and again, let me ask the question, uh, uh, to the board members again. Is there any other amendment that you would like to introduce on Tuesday? So staff has the time to prepare the language for you to introduce those amendments on Tuesday.
I cannot think of one. Can you, Commissioner Minzer?
Not beyond what I just, uh, outlined.
Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I guess the only thing I might add is, uh, uh, there's a possibility of, uh, interaction with the public that might have concerns over the weekend or something. So I'm, I'm not sure that I I won't make some adjustment, but I can't give you that commitment right now.
Right now, there's nothing, though. Okay. So we got that piece settled.
Okay, um, it seems like, uh, we almost, uh, done with this briefing. So just to bring all together, um, we'll have, um, an item on Tuesday, uh, board agenda two in the afternoon, where the board will consider approving amendment number four, uh, to the, to the county budget. In terms of the process, um, I will ask, uh, the the vice chair to introduce the motion to approve the amendment. And during the conversations, I will ask the board members to introduce the amendments as we highlighted in here. So, um, you, I may want to ask the board members who would like to sponsor that. So it is somewhat choreographed in a way who will introduce that amendment. And then you will exercise your prerogative to whether you like to accept those amendments or not. And then at the end, the motion of approving the, um, amendment number four, if that's the direction of the board, will be as amended. Then we'll.
One point of clarification, and that's regarding the, uh, the climate initiative. Um, is there a proviso or not? Because I I wrote down early on, um, as Commissioner Minzer mentioned, a proviso. So as the other ones, as long as the other cities do, I like your wording, at least some. But I wrote down, uh, that it would encourage the other cities to kick in. But is there a proviso attached to that amendment?
Uh, the the way, the way staff prepare this motion, it does not include a proviso. And what I'm hearing from Commissioner Minzer is he would like to add additional language to the motion that is conditional to at least two other jurisdictions to participate in that. So we we'll add the condition on the motion as opposed to have a budget proviso.
Okay.
And and I think that, and I think that's what I captured. Is that correct, Commissioner Minzer?
I think that makes the most sense to me. I mean, I'm willing to be talked out of that by anybody in in this call.
I just want to make sure that I capture your thought on this.
That was my sense of what would make sense. If we can get these jurisdictions to contribute that level of commitment, then I think we have seed money for, uh, for the launching of this clean energy initiative that was outlined by TCAT. And that, and that makes sense. If we don't, I think we need to wait until the climate mitigation plan comes through and figure out how we're gonna go from there.
So the risk is that if two other cities don't, and then we don't provide anything. But the opportunity is, one city may do it, and two others may co-opt in to, uh, equal, uh, to equal parts. And then they would get it? Perhaps. If Tom Water Lacy says, oh, yeah, we can come up with thirty-seven thousand, forty thousand.
Right.
Total, then they would get their thirty-seven. So it's a risk, but it's also an opportunity to partner with the cities, the cities to partner together.
You could get creative, I guess, and say, as long as, you know, uh, an an amount, an amount equal to twice. You know, it's it's contributed by our, you know, other jurisdictions within Thurston County. I mean, you could get, I I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, thirty-seven thousand into the nether. Uh, I don't know that it's gonna do what TCAT is is intending to launch, I think it's gonna take.
Okay.
So I just, I just think that's re, trying to look out for the tax, you know, taxpayer so that people know that we're keeping guardrails on on these type of things. I mean, it's, it's great to work with other jurisdictions, but it's cumbersome, and it's not always easy to do. So I think you have to be a little more careful about it and, um, make sure that everybody's, um, I haven't had a cha, I've had a chance to speak to Lacey. I know they're gonna discuss it. Uh, I've talked to two council members at Lacey. I haven't talked to anybody from Tom Water or Olympia about about what their stance might be on this proposal. So that's why I like, I'd rather see the guard, that proviso or whatever you want to call it, the the language in the amendment.
That's good with the leverage. Commissioner Edwards, you supported this initiative. Do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm inclined to go along with Commissioner Minzer on this particular issue, but I thought maybe for simplicity, uh, and 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 your comments possibly that, uh, one of the, one or more of the jurisdictions might not feel they could quite attain what is being asked for, that, uh, the original overall ask, I guess, was a hundred and fifty thousand. And we're contributing our portion of that on a certain condition. And maybe, uh, maybe this initiative could still be kicked off if, uh, the total raised was up to a hundred thousand dollars or something like that. And then, uh, that way, if you were feeling that, uh, a couple of jurisdictions might be pinched a little more than others, at least if they came together and provided enough seed money to reach that hundred thousand total, uh, that we would, uh, allow ours to be expended in that area. So I'm just trying to make it as simple as I can, but I think we're all on the same sheet of music here.
Okay. All right, anything, uh, else, Robin? Patty? Okay, Commissioner Minzer, go ahead.
Before we break, this is unrelated, but I just wanted to find out, uh, I'm not sure what budget planning sessions we have coming up. So I guess this is for Robin, but I know Commissioner Edwards, uh, brought up the concept of, uh, discussing single-year budgeting for, and and I supported that discussion. Um, we also had brought up in the earlier part of the winter, and I want to think it was the winter that we discussed pretty briefly, um, having a citizen committee related to budgeting. And I think you gave us some pros and cons to that, other jurisdictions that do it. And I can't remember if Thurston ever did it, but, uh, some citizen groups have approached me about, um, about having something like that. So when we're kind of talking about this high-level policy stuff, maybe at the same time we talk about single-year budgeting, we could also, as a board, revisit that topic, um, what the pros and cons are. Um, because I've, I've heard some new pro arguments that I hadn't heard before, and that, um, I've kind of, I I want to be able to weigh them against the con arguments that I heard before that I'm not quite remembering. So I'm just wondering when we could have those discussions.
Yeah, uh, we have, um, scheduled next Thursday, uh, this coming Thursday, next week. Um, uh, uh, we'll have a budget, uh, session. I will expand that to take the time of the commissioners' check-in, just to make sure that you have enough time. And we, we're gonna have a discussion related to the biennial annual budgets for you to have that discussion. And also we'll exercise, uh, uh, a conversation with you for you to give us what will be your priorities that you would like to introduce to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget. And at that point, uh, uh, the board can have a conversation on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the budget. Um, on that aspect, you know, I think it will be, uh, worth to continue the conversation. But time-wise, I don't think we're gonna be able to withstand this, uh, this, uh, Citizens Committee, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. But certainly, it will be a good piece of conversation as how you like to exercise that option, um, in the upcoming years.
Fair enough, thank you.
It would depend on how we did it, actually. It, there's, there's some options, and I'll, I'll, uh, next Thursday's a little fast to put something together, but I'll see what I can do.
Your magic. All right, uh, that wraps up. No other comments or questions? Okay, Ramon?
Yeah, so, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, uh, the process, it was cleared, at least the way I'd laid out to you, the options that you may have on Tuesday. Um, and, uh, this process has been discussed with, uh, Elizabeth Petroc, and she's here if you have any questions related to the bu, to the process itself. But again, uh, hopefully that, um, I was, uh, clear enough as to what the process that you may want to exercise on Tuesday afternoon.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you all for, uh, joining in, and thank you, staff, uh, for helping out, getting this going. Thank you very much. We'll see you next time.